I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sit down. Ms. Johnson, we have roll call please.
Yes, sir. Mayor Jerome?
Here.
Ms. Tillot?
Here.
Mr. Prale?
Here.
Ms. Hoops?
Here.
Mr. Rolson?
Here.
Mr. Slavy?
Here.
Mr. Tucker?
President and county.
Thank you.
Though maybe not accounted for. Okay, thank you. Uh, this is time for the public to come forward and to, with any comments you have on a subject that is not on the agenda, given three minutes, and uh, when you come up, please state your name and address. And uh, any uh, comments that you have and any questions, so answers to your questions will be given on the uh, on the city's website under uh, FAQs and um, within a thirty day period of time. So with that, we have um, somebody representing, uh, I think it's Mr. Harlow Middleton, please.
Harlow Middleton, Main Street Leasing, six ninety-nine East Fifth Avenue. And I'm here tonight for nineteen twenty-one, uh, the restaurant, Norman Van Aken. Uh, just to tell you that uh, the restaurant is closed tonight and tomorrow night. For a very good purpose, they've been invited to present uh, their food at the James Beard Foundation House in Manhattan. Okay, I'll go again. Harlow Middleton, Main Street Leasing, six ninety-nine East Fifth Avenue. And I'm here tonight to talk about nineteen twenty-one, um, by Norman Van Aken, uh, the restaurant on Fourth Avenue. It is closed tonight and tomorrow night for very good reason. Uh, they've been invited to uh, present uh, their menu, or part of their menu, at the James Beard Foundation House in Manhattan. This is kind of the uh, the quote, equal to getting an Oscar. I mean, if the food business, it is just a major honor. What is kind of interesting is, any of you who are interested in watching that kind of process, if you go to the James Beard Foundation website, there's a link there that will tell you at six fifteen tomorrow night, they will have live streaming cameras in the kitchen from six fifteen until dessert is served, so you can see the whole team effort of how they put together cooking and then all the way the presentations are made. So just wanted to let you know, uh, one of our businesses is up in the Big Apple and, and doing well. Second thing, it has nothing to do with that, but since I'm here, I'm going to tell you. Friday, I will be given the Still Standing After Fifty Years Award from the Far de Bard.
Thank you. Lloyd Kerne.
Floyd Kerne, ten fifteen North Alexander Street. Uh, as of this date, I've had no contact concerning any actions or discussion of the various points I've brought up at the past two city council meetings, so therefore, I bring it up again. In addition to that, you mentioned these are supposed to be on the question and answer session. They're not on that either. I just checked this afternoon. Okay, number one, Thrill Hill status. Has any action been taken concerning the possibility of reopening the mining operation, thereby achieving a significant source of revenue for the city? Has a plan been established to both correct the drainage problems on this site, plus construct the waste wa- wastewater reservoir? On your budget meeting in two days, it says wastewater reservoir sometime after twenty twenty-two. That's where it is in that budget package, it's U.O.L. hassle out Thursday. Oak Trees, has the city decided to take advantage of the free oak trees available via the grant funds through the Friends of the Environment and the Mount Dora Community Trust? The Friends of the Environment has already deposited funds with Greens Nursery to purchase oak trees for planting on private property within the city. The trees will be ready in late September. There will be a notice in the utility bills, probably in August, about the procedures for private individuals to get these trees and to have them planted on their private property within the city. The other half of that was city property and city right of way. Parking, has the city manager contacted the owner of the property on Liberty Avenue concerning the possibility of purchasing the property for an additional park and parking area for the city? No, okay? Has any discussion arisen about the other areas that I suggested that were not covered in your parking survey? And now that the word is out about the post office moving in two years, has any thought been given to approaching the owner of the post office property concerning buying that and making that additional property, additional parking? And lastly, has any decision been reached concerning who reimburses, or if any reimbursement of the eleven thousand dollars the city spent to hire an independent attorney to decide that the previous city attorney should be let go? And lastly, do we still have an unqualified city attorney here representing the city at these meetings? Any comments at all?
It will rest on the, on the website.
It will be on the website.
When?
Okay.
Thank you. Maybe not tomorrow, but it'll be there.
Are they there? It is there.
Okay. And lastly, Marla Montgomery?
Hello, I'm Marla Montgomery, twenty-three eighty-seven Washington Road, Mount Dora. Two Mayor Nick Jerome and Mount Dora City Council members. Thank you very much for designing, designating the month of June as LGBTQ Pride Month in our city and flying the rainbow flag. It's difficult to put into words how meaningful taking that action has been for us. We, as members of Mount Dora Pride, want to express our deep appreciation on behalf of the LGBTQ people. We posted articles in our pro- of the proclamation and the related flag rising ceremony on our web, our Facebook page. Those reports were so popular, they garnered twenty-one hundred page views and in excess of two hundred reactions, comments, and shares. It's rare that any of our posts generates such an extensive response. We thought you might like to hear a few of the comments as followers made. One member wrote, "Thanks for the wonderful proclamation from the mayor and city council." Another reader was extremely moved and said, "Tears are running down my face." Still another commented, "We always enjoy visiting Mount Dora. It is so nice to see that they are welcoming diversity and embracing equality. Well done." Thanks to those on the city staff who worked on it, on these issues, and to all of you on the council for showing your support. It's actions like this that cause us to love living, working, and socializing in Mount Dora. Sincerely, Mount Dora Pride, Marla Montgomery Representative.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on any subject not on the agenda? Seeing that, we will start. We have some, we have a presentation tonight from the police department on the body cameras.
Thank you, mayors, city council members. Um, I'm going to turn it over to our police chief, who is also our public safety director. Um, but I'd just like to mention, as we wrote in the memo, that the body cameras are worn as a tool for law enforcement. And I think that's an important thing to mention in today's society and the way that things tend, tend to be running today in our local cities and, and other cities around the nation. I'd like for him, um, and the crew to be able to turn this over to them, so.
Thank you, John LaGrady, Director of Public Safety. Uh, I just want to take a moment to give a little bit of history. Uh, four years ago, when I came on board, uh, the city manager at the time said, "Look, we have to go to the body cameras." And I suggested that we wait and let the bigger cities fight it out in the courts and let the Florida legislation work out the public records laws. Uh, that has come forward and, and, and just everything has been smoothed out through the courts and the legislation. About eighteen months ago, um, Sergeant Adam Helfand was uh, given the task of project manager uh, for the, for the body camera system. And I had one prerequisite for it, I wanted it to be able to synchronize. Uh, so you can look at the dash cam, which every vehicle's had for years, as well as when the officer gets out of the car and approaches the citizen and interacts with the citizen, whether it's out of the view of the dash cam or not, and, and that takes a lot of uh, interaction. So, an eighteen month, uh, twenty month, uh, research that he did, several companies, I think we wound up with um, winding it down to five, and then we put it out to bid. And uh, the company that won, and I'll let, I'll let Sergeant Helfand go, go through that. But we are very excited about this new tool that we have, and uh, it's already paid dividends. So, thank you.
Good evening, council. Uh, I'm Adam Helfand, uh, most of you guys know me. Uh, with the last eighteen months, we've been researching body cameras. Uh, one of the big features that we wanted was for it to sync seamlessly. Uh, we had WatchGuard previously, uh, but it was what's called the DV1 system, inverted DBPs. It was a bit outdated, and we wanted to upgrade it. This is the system we went with for the body camera, it's called the Vista, it's made by WatchGuard. Uh, it can mount anywhere, so, for instance, I'm wearing a tie, I have it to the right, it's not a big deal. This is the normal uniform that the officers would wear on a day-to-day basis. Um, so it's a, it's mounted with a magnetic clip, and I'll get into the clip. I just wanted everybody to be able to see what it looks like on a normal uniform. And this is Corporal McKenzie.
He's just showing off the corporal.
Okay, so, the Vista Wi-Fi camera is uh, the option that they have that will sync seamlessly with the car, so being Wi-Fi, it actually talks to the car. The car has an antenna, uh, and when they trigger or record an event in the car, it triggers and records the events in the camera. One of the setbacks, the other cameras on the market, is you have to remember to hit a record button. Well, our system, you don't have to. You do a traffic stop, you flip the lights on, your car camera turns on, and your body camera turns on. Then when you stop the recording in the car, it does the same with the body camera, it stops it as well. Uh, significantly better than any of the other cameras that I've seen on the market, they don't have that feature. Very, very important, it makes it much easier for the officer, uh, and it makes it so that the officer can't really forget to start to record a traffic stop or anything that the car would have triggered the event. So, this is the mounting system, and I've brought two of them in here, so you can take a look at them. I'll, I'll pass one in on this side, one on this side. So there's two pieces to this system, to this uh, clip. There's a magnet that actually holds it together, it's very difficult to uh, kind of pull apart. Uh, they're uh, they're uh, called earth magnets, um, but that is two pieces. One goes behind the shirt, one goes in front of the shirt, and then it snaps together. Then there's two pins that go through it. Uh, it's very, very tough, very strong. Um, the other cameras that we saw on the market, it looked like, almost like a beaver clip. Uh, and it uh, it, yeah, watch your fingers, it'll, it'll get you. Yeah, so the uh, the other cameras on the market, it's like a beaver clip, and it just kind of, it's kind of flimsy, it kind of sits on the shirt, and uh, we found in all the testing, a lot of them would fall off, and you really don't want something like that. Not only is it costly, but potentially somebody now has your, you know, if they find it and we can't retrieve it. So, uh, it's simple to use, it does not have to be used with the car. Like I said, it will start recording with the car, but if you are, say, for instance, inside of a retail establishment or in somebody's home, all of a sudden, you need to record something, just push one button on the camera and it starts recording, very, very easy. Uh, another feature that this system has, that a lot of the other ones don't, is it actually has a display that will give real information. Some of the other systems, uh, will just have LED indicators. For instance, Taser Axon is one of the biggest ones on the market right now. There, they have two LED lights, one of which tells you if the battery is charged, if it's uh, halfway empty or empty, and the other one is if you're recording or not. That is the only indication of anything that's going on with their system. With this system, with the WatchGuard system, you can see the officer's name, so they're registered to each officer. If you push the sign button, it literally will display who has it assigned to them. And that metadata goes into video later, it's something that we are able to search for, uh, in videos. Uh, you can see what type of incident it is, and I'll get into that a little bit, but as you see, it'll say arrest, it'll say uh, if it was a citation or, or so forth. It's all displayed on the screen, the signal strength and battery. So, uh, being able to see what type of category on the actual display helps us on the backend. We have different retention periods for different type of events. So if I write a traffic warning, I may only want to retain that for thirty or ninety days, depending on what the public records laws are. If I make a DUI arrest, I don't want that video to go anywhere until court is over with. So, tagging your, your event, your video with a particular type, right from the device, helps out significantly on the backend, because we are storing this in-house. Uh, we researched cloud storage, and it was just astronomical price. And then you're also kind of locked into, I mean, they have your video. But we're storing it here, and this is what helps us with uh, with uh, retention, retention periods. So this is some of the technical specs of the device. Uh, it is GPS enabled, it has Wi-Fi. Uh, we have different features of high-definition recording or standard-definition recording, which will affect the record length of, of battery time. It is military spec as far as uh, being dropped in weather, it could be cold weather, warm weather, it's really uh, very, very rugged. This is the car system, so this is the in-car camera, it's called the 4RE, also made by WatchGuard. Uh, it's got multiple cameras, specifically on the front of the car, it has a panoramic camera and then a front standard camera. The benefit of the panoramic camera is that when you watch incidents typically on TV, it, it goes off-frame quickly. If you're on a traffic stop, you only have a narrow field of view. The panoramic camera has got approximately a hundred, I think it's a hundred and sixty-degree field of view, very, very wide. Uh, so it's not very focused, but when you're watching the two videos seamlessly, you get the whole picture of the event, and then you add in the body camera, it just paints the whole picture completely. And then this is some of the specs of the 4RE system. There's an internal hard drive with two hundred gigs, it's always recording, almost like a se- uh, a security camera. So if we, for instance, got a complaint with traffic, uh, somebody speeding three days ago, two weeks ago, a month ago, we can go into that system and actually set the parameter of time and find that video, because it's still there. There's a thumb drive that is used as redundancy, it's thirty-two gigs, it's just a, a backup to that as well. The uh, 4RE system for in-the-car, it's a touchscreen, makes it very easy. We don't want the officers diverted from driving, they're not supposed to be using this driving anyways, but we want their attention on the road, we don't want them having to fumble around with any type of small device. Uh, it's very large buttons, very quick, very few options. You can, uh, in the beginning of shift, check it out to a particular officer, if it's a pool car. Uh, if uh, you want to review a video, say you had a DUI, we can go back and look at the video while you're typing your arrest affidavit, uh, and all of this is, is uh, through the touchscreen display. Uh, the video itself, on the prior system, when the DV1 was a DVD, and you had to physically bring that DVD into the police department. Uh, the new system, what it does is it uploads to our server wirelessly when they pull into the police department. It does not have to be triggered, all I have to do is pull into the police department and it just does itself. Uh, there's nothing for them to remember, um, simple as that, and it's being stored here on premise. So, WatchGuard, they automate the uh, the wireless transfer, they simplify the interaction with the officer, and then we have Record After The Fact, which was what I talked about as far as being able to uh, set a parameter of time that wasn't initially established. So if we got that complaint, or if something happened, the lights weren't on. Uh, for instance, if um, if uh, they were in a car crash or something, their lights weren't on, but we can pull that video back and say, "Okay, we, we need to take a look at this," because it's always recording in the background. The uh, the Record After The Fact is proprietary, this is the only system in the world that does that as far as uh, police video camera systems. And essentially, you just go in there, you tell what date and time, when you want to start the video of what you're retrieving, tell it the date and time of when you want to end that video, and it creates that event, and we export it. So, this is a quick video from our new system, this is from the body camera specifically. Uh, it's a retail theft, uh, and the charge was resisting an officer. And I want you to see, the first video is what was recorded based off of what any camera on the market would be. Uh, meaning that I was only able to push the button to record basically as I was handcuffing him. So, it would be difficult for me to articulate in court as to why I don't have video prior to him being handcuffed. But I know what happened, and I can explain what happened in an affidavit. It's all there, it's just hard to explain it without the video. Uh, the business is a retail establishment, they don't have any video as far as surveillance of, if this was a Taser or any other brand, this would be what's submitted with the court. Since we have the system that we have, I was able to go into my camera, set a new parameter of time, and back it up further than when I pushed the button, and get video of the whole incident. Like I said, this is proprietary, and this is not what any other camera on the market would be able to do. But, now, if you watch the video, you can easily articulate a resisting officer arrest, and as you'll see. That's video that any other system, if we would have purchased, would not exist. But what we can do is, like I said, go in, set our new parameter, and pull that video from the background. The body camera holds twelve hours of video in the background, so we have a couple of shifts, uh, on and off basically, to, to pull that video. When I plugged my camera in for pulling this video, it uh, gave me up to Saturday, and this was pulled yesterday. The redundant backup in the car, the thumb drive that I mentioned earlier, what that does is it's not accessible to the officer, it's locked in the device, and it holds video temporarily, it's just holding the video that wasn't sent to the server in between. So once it dumps that video to the server, that thumb drive is, is wiped clean. And then when they drive around and do traffic stops, it builds up again. If the car or the vehicle is completely disabled, smashed, and the camera system's completely destroyed, we go into it, we pull that thumb drive, and then we've got that video. So it's like the, the vehicle's black box, essentially. It's just another way that we are not going to lose video. Uh, the camera has the ability to record in high-definition and standard-definition, so it's always recording in both. And then when you stop the event, the officer gets to choose whether they want to restore it as high-definition or standard-definition. This is very crucial for us, because we're storing this on premise. So if I was to do a traffic warning, I would only want to do that in the standard-definition, because it's nothing that I need specifically. If I think that it's going to be a citizen complaint, I may want to put it into a high-definition, or if it's a DUI, I'm going to do it in a high-definition. But since we're storing in-house on our server, it's very, very important that we have that option, because the size of that file is significantly smaller when they do the standard-definition. So, once the officer pulls in, it uploads from the car, it goes to our evidence library, which is our software, which sorts out all the video, that is stored onsite. And then, if the state attorney's office or a defense attorney wants a copy of it, we can actually send it through what's called CloudShare. It uses a third-party company called, uh, software called Microsoft Djour. And what it does is it retrieves the specific video, puts it out to the cloud, and gives them an access to it, so they're not actually logged into our server in any way, so we're in compliance of CEGIS and any other regulations. They don't actually have that connection completely. And then with the body camera, what the officer has to do is sometime in their shift, they uh, plug their camera into an A Bay dock station, we have three of them at the police department, and it uploads that same video. The software itself, Evidence Library Four seamlessly puts that video together. So it says that these were recorded at the same time, in the same proximity, these are same video. So when you pull that one video, and you want, whether it's the car or the body camera, on the right-hand side of the screen, it says, "Well, these are attached to it, and let's watch these at the same time." If for some reason the camera system was wrong and says that, "No, these aren't together," or you saying these aren't together, you can separate them at that time, but this is a, a big benefit for us, where others, other offers don't do that. You would have to kind of put them into a folder and constantly be looking at and checking to see, does this body cam go with this and this and that? So, the Evidence Library Four is where you do uh, all of your uh, case management. This is where the video comes in, this is where you start assigning cases to it. So if I made an arrest and I pulled a case number, I would tag that event with a case number. It's easier to search with that, and then we can set our retentions. We can even, if you want, to uh, put a prevent purge, and no matter what our retention period is, it doesn't go anywhere ever until it's counteracted. Um, and then that same software is going to be where the officer, I'm sorry, the evidence department sends that CloudShare out to uh, the state attorney's office. It's all within one system, you don't have to go elsewhere. And then I'm going to take a, uh, show you guys the system real quick. It's web-based, which means that uh, any officer that's on any computer on our network specifically can access it. The supervision of the administration can all look into there, if there's an incident, they don't have to go contact an evidence person, um, they have the access at their computers. There are tiers of, of privileges, meaning the officers can't look at supervisory level stuff, supervisor can't view administrative level stuff, uh, the officers can't go in there and delete video, it's, it's just simply not allowed, the computer will not allow it, because it's on that tiered system. Um, so it's, it's, it's pretty nice to be able to have uh, different retention periods. So... I'm going to take a closer look to see which video this is, once again. So I just wanted to show how easy really is the system. The officer, the corporal that came in with me, uh, his body camera was activated as we're kind of coming in the door. And it's already into our system.
Police chief, who's also our public safety director, um, but I'd like to mention, as you wrote in the memo...
And that's, that's how easy it is, um, and how quick it is. And then this will be retained for our, uh, public record retention, and it'll purge out, and we'll have a balance in our software, in our, in our server. Does anybody have any other questions? Absolutely.
That, that's fascinating, huh? Um, my only question is, um, how long will our current storage that we have now last? What do you anticipate?
So, so the way that it works is, it's constantly purging and, and inputting and purging. Once we establish, we're looking at approximately sixteen terabytes eventually, uh, that'll be more than enough indefinitely. Um, for our size agency, because of that retention, and it's kind of, it's going to find a balance. Right now, we have sixty-five hundred and fifty-one videos in the system, and it's approximately two and a half terabytes right now.
So you've got plenty of storage.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're not having any issues with that, and we're, we're working with IT directly to, to work with uh, our storage management.
That's great, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, you can refer to the chief if you like. Well, I know the uniformed officers all have, will the detectives be equipped with them, and your tac units?
No, that's not the plan right now. Detectives, no, the tac units, yes, when they are deployed for certain, um, um, jobs out in the street, whether they're going to be contacting drug deals or something of that sort. It's evidence, it's a tool, so I'd rather have that than, than not. So you have to, dependent upon what you're going to be doing.
All right, thank you.
We have one question from the audience, if you would like to address that.
Um, let me get this clear, you get out of the car, and then it automatically comes on? That triggers it to come on?
Not just simply getting out of the car, so if you were to turn on the lights in the car, those are triggered to an event, and that'll cause it. Uh, once you're out of the car, the only thing that causes it is the button. When you're in the car, the lights would cause it, there's a crash impact sensor, so it records a certain amount of G-forces, it'll start recording. But simply entering that to exit the car, it's likely to cause that.
Okay, so, it's recording and you're out of the car. Do you have the ability during the process of the, an event, to turn it off? Can you physically turn it off, is there a place on it to turn it off?
There is, so you, the same button to turn on is to turn off as well, yes.
And do you have policy about not turning it off during an event?
Yes.
Good, thank you.
It just, it just to expound on that, so we have dash cams in our vehicles, we've had those for a long time. So the policy, it's just the next step. It's just on our bodies now, so if we go into somebody's house, it's on any, our policy is clear, any interaction with the public, it needs to be on. And if it's not...
And if it's not on, then you need to have a good explanation as to why not.
You mentioned the crash sensor and other items like that. Does it have a prone button? Should the officer be horizontal for a certain amount of time for it?
No, it does not have that feature. But again, the record after the fact, if something were to happen that the officer didn't anticipate, we can go back and pull that video within twelve hours. So if there was a shooting or something, I think the last thing the officer's thinking about is taking a record button. We'll still be able to get that video, which unlike any other one on the market, they would not.
And counsel, just in closing, this was a hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand-dollar expenditure on your part with technology how it is. I think we did a good thing, we leased them. So in five years, we just give them back, which will allow us to get this current technology at the time. And with the company that we have partnered with, they'll go sell these to second-market police departments. And then that money will be put back in our account to go toward new devices. Thank you.
Well, I know how hard you all have worked on this and studied and made careful decisions without rushing into it. I think it's a great tool for both the police and for the community as well. And I want to compliment the chief and sergeant and all the others who were involved in this. It was great.
Thank you, mayor. You know, in addition to comment from the public about, you know, the value of the camera, additionally, I'm happy that you have that camera there, because I think it puts the public on notice that they're on camera and they'll act, I would think, appropriately more often. And that puts you at less peril. So I really am glad that that feature's there for you.
Thank you, chief, very much. Thank you, sergeant. Next, we have a city station from Two J Fish, Lake Southern MPO. Our projects, Cassidy County projects.
Thank you, mayor. A couple of months ago, we talked about bringing different community leaders in different capacities into the council to give you an update. So Mr. Fish graciously accepted for this month. So I'll turn the floor over to him and let him talk about MPO.
Thank you very much. I'm going to talk about some action items that will be coming before the councils. Let me do a little prep here, a little quick. Could not believe I went back and looked, it was January. I thought it was just a few weeks ago I was here. So let's jump into it. Wacoma Parkway, the future of our local economy, based upon better connecting us to a metropolitan area of four million people. So once that access is achieved, four-twenty-nine is complete. New, what's the number? What's the new road? Four fifty-three. It's going to start sticking, saying four fifty-three. That will be open very soon, by next spring. By the way, Kelly Park Roads Interchange from four forty-one, if you want to jump on up to the next one, that'll be open in just a few weeks, by the end of July. So you know the map, you know wacomaparkway.com. I don't have to break it down like I used to, because I think everybody gets it's officially under construction this year. So we've got the sections now by Central Florida Expressway Authority happening. Got four fifty-three making its way into Lake County. That's all Central Florida Expressway Authority. Now DOT is moving forward on the six-lane, not four-lane, but six-lane of forty-six into Mount Dora, removing the interchange, replacing it with a flyover. And that red piece there, I'm going to come back to that in a moment. That's the six-lane of four forty-one. We need to talk about that one. And oh, by the way, we have this other priority, forty-four, to be four-laned by Lowe's. And then we start seeing what's already built over by Camp Challenge. New forty-six A by Redtail. And the new forty-six, now four twenty-nine into Seminole County. And in twenty-twenty-one, the whole thing is complete with the I-four interchange with the four seventeen. One point, keeps going up, one point six billion at this point. Wolf Branch Innovation District, what a great idea. So I hope the city's vision remains steadfast that don't go cheap. Wait for the good stuff. Get the economic development at the high caliber. Because what you have is location, location, location. There is our piece, six-laning into Mount Dora. No more interchange. There'll be a signal underneath the flyover. And we'll be six-laning four forty-one all the way down to the county line, just past this and the railroad. So that will be done twenty-nineteen. If you look to the left, that's north. If you look to the right, that's south where the four twenty-nine is. The interchange that you can drive by today on your way to Sanford, that's how new forty-six A by Redtail will connect right to it. So if you go on the website, you get a clearer look, but that will be open in twenty-nineteen as well. What I love about section six is from Camp Challenge to the river, you get a couple of bridges for all the habitat that totaled thousands and thousands of feet. And then you get a third awesome bridge across the Wacoma River. So what you'll have is three bridges over the river, one westbound, one eastbound, and then one with the bowl-free two-lane road and the trail. All that green, that's for twenty-seventeen to twenty-nineteen. That's all construction, we're there. Highland Street, just want to throw in a couple of projects real quick. Couple of years, that's funded. Money's available July of next year, so you can finish that streetscape. Just east of Lakes of Mount Dora, we've got the forty-four resurfacing all the way to the San Johns River of Volusia County. That's forthcoming in just a couple of years, so be ready for that. And then we have landscaping after the flyover's finished over here at forty-six and four forty-one. The landscaping is officially funded in nineteen-twenty, so that's forthcoming. Ah, the four forty-one roadway phase. So, two million dollars, that's not a lot, right? A million of it's coming up this coming year, but then they've split the other million over the next two years. So it's going to take us, under current circumstances, DOT will take three years to acquire that roadway, but when it's done, it's done. You're shovel-ready. So four forty-one from Bonnley Street to forty-six will be a shovel-ready project in basically two and a half years as DOT purchases the roadway. It's really for pines, for retention. Why is that important? Well, let's see. MPO priorities currently say that we're going to four-lane forty-four next to Lowe's and Publix first. The first thing that DOT is supposed to fund, since all the money's going to Wacoma Parkway, is four-lane forty-four, Montlochlevin and Lancaster and so on. So that's where we stand now. It's shovel-ready, it's ready to go. However, four forty-one will be shovel-ready by twenty-twenty. So that means roadway is acquired and nothing's holding it back from being constructed as a six-lane. Now, I'm just a transportation planner, you all the decision-makers. But when I'm looking at a two-lane road that needs to be four-lane versus a four-lane road that should have been six-lane a long time ago, that connects from a six-lane to another six-lane, I'm personally going to recommend that you look at four forty-one in the new light. Mount Dora should communicate that to the MPO. And the MPO will ask Eustis to weigh in, because this issue did come up in two thousand nine and both city elected bodies weighed in. And Eustis was a little split at that time. They perceived the four-laning to be the beginnings of a bypass around Eustis, a four-lane bypass. Well, that's not on the table anymore. Only this one piece. And candidly, this one piece has to be four-lane, because it's the bottleneck. If we already had Round Lake Road built all the way up to forty-four, this would be a non-issue. But we don't. So we'll come back to that. But I want to mention, Round Lake Road, that's important. Mount Dora City Council, you're a major stakeholder. County's about to start a study. They're going to look at, what does it look like from forty-six, basically the county line, which means the trail crossing forty-six up to Wolf Branch and then on up to forty-four? And then what does it look like when you tie it into four thirty-nine? And so is it a two-lane road? Would it ever need to be a four-lane road? Wolf Branch Innovation District, how does that play into it? So that study will happen, but that study's not going to be complete until the twenty, end of twenty eighteen. And then you got to design whatever is supported, and there has to be money to design it. And that takes a couple of years. And then you're going to buy the roadway, which you got two miles of roadway to buy it between Wolf Branch and forty-four. So now we're already five years into it. And then you can finally build Round Lake Road. So I just want to prepare you that we're going to have to look at forty-four too. But here's the beauty, north-south, you've got forty-four by Lowe's, Round Lake Road forthcoming, four thirty-seven, which is not going to be four-lane, but it's going to be a better two-lane with the realignment in Sorrento. And then new forty-six A to the Beltway, to the four twenty-nine. So all of that combined with forty-six, Wolf Branch, State Road forty-four, County Road forty-four, you got a pretty good grid system out there. So just let the MPO know, and it doesn't have, it's not supposed to be tonight. This is a prep of, your city manager will bring back the question, how do you want to weigh in with the MPO? And this is not the only question that may come from your city manager about the MPO these days. So we can talk about that at the end. PD and E study of the trail done. Federal Highway Administration approved it. It says the only way you're getting from downtown Mount Dora to the trail that DOT is building for you out by Camp The Challenge and onto Seminole and Orange County is the only way is on that railroad. That's the only approved route. So there's some agreement with that railroad that operates, that active railroad for the end of this year, November of twenty-seventeen. So we have pending the fact that we can extend it. Now, right now, Lake County is designing the piece from Sorrento on out to Redtail, where it connects to what DOT is building for us. And so the piece from Tremaine out to Sorrento at forty-six where the railroad ends, that's about to be, the consultant's about to be selected. So that'll go under design in just a couple of months. Segment one, that's the one in here into Mount Dora. So all that's happening, Lake County's doing it. They're a great partner on this one. Now, that memorandum of understanding with the railroad in Lake County, it stipulates two million dollars. It says that money will be used by the railroad to add storage capacity elsewhere on their line, so it's not just going into profits, it's actually going back into the infrastructure. And so there's a request pending by Lake County and City of Mount Door with the MPO to extend that until November of twenty-twenty. That gives you time to plan on how do you come up with that million dollars. And it's not just that simple. When you all commit and Lake County commits, I have to get a commitment or the MPO gets a commitment from DOT. And that says that DOT will fully fund the roadway acquisition of the dirt. Because you're getting the active operator out of the way. There's still a real estate owner underneath. They take their tracks when Florida Central leaves. They take their tracks, sell off the steel, move on, build capacity elsewhere. CSX has just passed for the dirt. So DOT is now in a mode with the MPO of, we get it, we get it. We have to purchase it, all at the same time. And you all are not going to give over two million dollars unless we tell you we're committed. So that's where we're at. So all that stuff is pending execution of actual formal agreements. And finally, a couple of other things happening. I'm going to talk about the old four forty-one Ford Central corridor between Mount Dora and Taveries. Lake County, another project they're managing and supporting Mount Dora is the roundabout design. And why a roundabout? Because they're safer. And anytime anyone asks, why a roundabout? They're safer. They're cheaper, they're safer, they're better for the community. And I love the idea that this particular roundabout will serve as a historic gateway monument to the fact that this is the original center of the Golden Triangle. So I think that's great, gateway toward Eustis, toward Taveries and into Mount Dora. So the city of Taveries did sponsor the supplemental of a formal application package to go back and re-study how the trail would extend from the currently constructed trailhead in downtown Taveries and Wootton Park. And by the way, there is a piece of trail from there all the way to Leesburg, basically in front of the Home Depot. So that asset sits out there. Meanwhile, we're designing the next asset to come, which is your Wacoma Trail. And we have a gap in the middle that Taveries has said, we'll submit an application to DOT. It was approved, so it's eligible for funding. Their original thought was to go after a tighter grant, but now they're realizing any money would be great. So where Taveries is now is the MPO is saying, thank you for the groundwork, but now we need all partners officially on board. That includes City of Mount Dora and by to Tremaine Street. And that is not an easy answer. And sometimes we have to stop and say, the obsessions with twelve-foot trail connectivity, I get. But sometimes you're going to have to accept riding in the road sometimes to get that connectivity. And we'll just have to take this baby step by baby step. So there's no foregone conclusions, but we're looking back at studies that were done more than a decade ago. They have lost their shelf life. DOT will not further those old efforts. We have to start afresh. And that's what we're asking for funding and we're hoping to get that funding within the next eighteen months. So there is pending action that will come back and ask for formal support from the city council on this trail study and a partnership among the county, city of Taveries and city of Mount Dora. So that is everything I have. I just want to re-emphasize about Round Lake Road, that the county is moving forward on the study. So you all get to weigh in on what the future of that quarter looks like. And I'll stop and see what questions you have. And nothing's off limits. If you've read anything in the news lately, the rumors of my demise are greatly exaggerated. I'm still employed at the MPO. We have some opinion columnists that sometimes... Someone put that on the record, that did happen this past week. And I continue to serve the MPO as long as I serve the MPO.
Any questions?
Let me, I want to go back to forty-four, shovel-ready. Is it funded?
It's not, that's the issue.
Okay, that's what I thought, but I wanted to make that clear.